Good morning, everyone. Thanks for attending today's session and welcome to the webinar. I appreciate you giving your time up for from your business schedules to attend. And today's session is very much directed at businesses considering applying for the 2025 round of the King's Awards for Enterprise. If I can introduce myself, I'm Keith Atwood. Amongst many other things, I work on behalf of the Essex Lieutenant's to support the promotion of these awards across Essex. As I'm sure many of you will realise, these awards are considered to be very prestigious. And they're aimed at organisations who excel at innovation, international trade, sustainable development, or who successfully promote opportunity through social mobility. The awards have run since 1965 and the logo that winners can use in their marketing activity is recognised worldwide as a mark of excellence. Previous successful applicants have noted multiple benefits from winning, including assisting their business development efforts and improving staff morale. Winning a King's Award is a great opportunity for you to celebrate your collective success with your teams. The award is the highest honour available even in the UK for business. And it's only could anybody who's not on mute, mute them for a minute, please. Thank you. Thank you. And as I said, it's the highest honour available in the UK for business and is only granted following a rigorous independent assessment process. And that's one of the reasons why the award is held in such high regard around the world. So today's event is going to focus on peer-to-peer support. You're going to hear from a number of past winners, all based in Essex, who are going to share their experience of both the process of applying for the award and also the tangible benefits their businesses have experienced as a result of their participation. We'll have a good Q and A session later on, so do take the opportunity to ask any questions. And we do have an expert panel present who would be delighted to address these. So finally, Essex County Council, the Lord Lieutenant and I would like to see so many, many more great Essex businesses receive the recognition they so richly deserve. So good luck with your applications. And I'd now allow to hand you over to Sharina Mancou of Essex County Council, who will take you through the detailed arrangements for today. Thank you very much again for your attention.
Thank you, Keith. And morning, everybody. And so as Keith mentioned, we're delighted to have insightful representatives from Essex today to talk us through the awards, what they mean and how they can benefit businesses in our county. And before we kick off, just some quick housekeeping. So firstly, we've aimed for this webinar to feel very relaxed and informal. However, please keep your microphones muted throughout unless you have a speaker presenting. Keith also mentioned we will have a Q and A session towards the end, which I'll announce. You can use a Q and A function during the meeting, just confirm who your question is aimed at, and I'll ask these during the allotted Q and A section. And there's a button at the top where you should be able to access that. And alternatively, if you'd like to wait until after we have heard from our speakers, you can raise your hand, join the Q and A session and ask your question verbally. Finally, a quick reminder that this meeting is being recorded, so if you would prefer to switch your camera off, please do so now. Wonderful. Okay, I'll now hand over to Chloe Pausa, who joins us from the official King's Awards office. Chloe's going to give us an overview of the application process, the timetable and tips based on the assessment process. Thanks, Chloe.
Hi, thanks, Sharina. Can I just check that you can see my screen there before I start?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. And so, hi, everyone. My name is Chloe Pausa. I'm from the King's Awards for Enterprise Office in Department for Business and Trade. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about the King's Award today and hopefully encourage you to apply. Thank you so much to Sharina and Keith and everyone that's organised this event today. I'm really thrilled to be able to to speak to you about the awards this morning. I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end as well. So just just a bit of an intro into the King's Awards. I just want to start off by saying that these are the most prestigious business awards for UK businesses. The late Duke of Edinburgh actually introduced the awards back in 1965, and since then, over 7,000 companies have achieved this award. Last year, we actually changed from Queen's Awards to reflect His Majesty, the King's desire to continue recognising and promoting outstanding businesses. And we are now known as the King's Awards for Enterprise. We have a new emblem, which you can see there, and a new change in colours, which can be used across our flag and marketing materials. The awards have evolved over the years, but they remain a constant enshrining the principles of quality and excellence. They aim to encourage and inspire UK businesses to be more innovative, sustainable, provide opportunities for the disadvantaged and achieve commercial success via exporting. We do have four categories that applicants can apply for, and you can also apply for more than one category if you wish to do so. So those four categories are innovation, which recognises businesses who demonstrate strong commercially successful innovative products or services. So for the innovation category, you must have had a product or service that's been on the market for at least a two-year period. For this category, we want to know why your innovation is important, how it is innovative. Perhaps you you are the first to bring it into your sector. We want to know what problems you're trying to solve and what the innovation has overcome. We then have the internet
And the jungle always goes the same way.
Sorry, I was muted there. So the next category we have is the international trade category. This is our our most known category. It's been going since the beginning and was previously known as the Queen's Award for Export. So as it says, this category recognises international trade in overseas earnings and commercial success. We ask applicants to show their overseas sales for either a three-year period or a six-year period, depending on how your finances have evolved over that time. What we would ask for is that you have at least £100,000 in overseas sales in the first year of your submitted figures. So then either for the three-year period, we would expect to see quite high growth over those over those three years, or for the six-year period, we would expect to see more gradual but still a substantial growth. Our third category is sustainable development. So again, for this one, we ask for either a sustainable product initiative scheme that's been running for a two-year period. We have in we have now moved away from recognising the three Rs of sustainability, so reduce, reuse and recycle. And we now strongly encourage businesses to look at the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Although we don't ask you to meet all of those, particularly depending on the size of your company, we ask you to look at these as a starter point when looking at your application. We want to know in the sustainable development category, perhaps have you brought in a new product or a service that's delivering environmental benefits? Or seeing a sustainable development outcome embedded within your organisation, your supply chain and the community? Importantly, for this category, we want to see that your whole company is sustainable. We want to see that the decision makers at the very top are promoting that sustainability throughout. Our last category is promoting opportunity through social mobility. And this recognises and rewards employers for having a high-quality social mobility initiative or programme in place within their company. So these can reach out and support people from disadvantaged backgrounds in order to inspire and guide them into the organisation and beyond. So for this category, we accept businesses, charity, social enterprises and not-for-profits that have a social mobility or intervention in place. You can apply for more than one category if you wish to do so. And this year, we will actually have five double award winners. I don't think we've ever had three or even four, so perhaps some of you may like to take that as a personal challenge. But perhaps stick with one for now. So in terms of the benefits of receiving an award, recipients tell us that receiving a King's Award does provide a huge commercial boost to the business, both in the UK and overseas. Every King's Award winner can use the trusted emblem mark, which you can see at the bottom of the screen there, on all of their products, services, marketing material, email signatures, anything you like for a five-year period. That prestigious emblem is a recognised royal endorsement that will get your business noticed above and beyond the competition, both at home and overseas. Many businesses tell me that having that King's Award emblem really has enabled to open new doors to them for new markets that they perhaps were struggling to enter beforehand. They even say that when they're speaking to overseas clients, that they are so interested in the royal endorsement, that when they're having meetings with them, that's that's all they want to talk about. So it really is a brilliant way of attracting new clients, new customers and new businesses. You can also fly the King's Awards flag at your office for that five-year period as well. And that again, shows the King's Awards emblem. Recipients have told us that the award provides increased sales and growth. It provides access to new clients and new markets. It provides greater recognition on a global stage. And importantly, this award isn't just for those senior decision makers. It really is an award for everyone within the business. It's a great way to recognise your staff and provide a huge boost of staff morale. It's a way to attract newly skilled staff as well as retain your current staff as well. Additionally, it's a great press opportunity. When you do win the award, you can obviously reach out to local press, national press to really raise your profile. You one member of your organisation will also be invited to a reception at Buckingham Palace, which again is a great way to celebrate the award. Each company is also formally presented with a grant of appointment scroll, which is signed by His Majesty the King by their local Lord Lieutenant. So this is a great day for the company. It allows all of the staff to celebrate the award as you receive your grant of appointment scroll and your trophy. If you take a look at our social media, there's just a few clips here, where you can see how businesses are using that award on their social media, on their websites, on their flag. It really is a great way to promote your business. And just in terms of the award cycle, to tell you a bit about some key dates, we open for the next awards round on the 6th of May. We then are open all the way through to the 12th of September. Now, I know this sounds like a lot, quite a long time, however, we really urge you to start the application as soon as possible. Applicants tell us that it can take around 20 plus hours to complete. That doesn't have to all be done in one go. You can return to the application as many times as you wish. It will always auto-save and you can work on it with collaborators in your company if you wish to do so. So it isn't just one person completing it in one go. We encourage you to share the workload with others in your in your business so that you can can complete it together. Once the application is closed on the 12th of September, we then go into our assessment process and our judging panel process. You will be informed at that point if you have been shortlisted. And if you are, we then go into our due diligence checks on those shortlisted businesses. Once we've been through our judging panels, we then go, we then seek approval personally from the Prime Minister and His Majesty the King. So again, that is another another benefit of our awards. They are sector-wide, they do, they are assessed by a team of sector experts, judging panels at the highest point within the civil service, so four permanent secretaries, and they are personally signed off by the Prime Minister and His Majesty. We are at that point in this year's process. And so we have just received approval from His Majesty the King, who has personally personally signed off the list. And we are gearing up to announce on the 6th of May for our 2024 recipients. And as I say, please do take a look at our social media. It will be a day of celebration and we'll also be opening for the 2025 round. So just quickly, in terms of the overarching eligibility criteria, each category does have its own criteria, but this is the overarching criteria for the four categories. So you must be based in the UK or you must have a UK subsidiary. You must have good compliance records with HMRC. So for example, making sure that all your new taxes are paid on time. You must be a self-contained enterprise and have at least two full-time or equivalent employees. And lastly, we are asked that all businesses demonstrate strong environmental, social and governance policies. We do have the full eligibility criteria on our website for each category, but if anyone does have any questions about any of them, I can talk you through those at the end. So how to apply? As I say, we're open to almost all UK businesses. The application process is free and you and it can be made online via gov.uk. You can apply for more than one category if you wish to do so when we open on the 6th of May. We have our website there, but I'm very happy to share these slides with Sharina afterwards, who can disseminate them to attendees today. So if you do have any questions that we don't get a chance to go through today, we have our email address and our help line, which is managed Monday to Friday. We have our website, our socials and our webs and our LinkedIn page there. So please do reach out to us if you if you wish to apply or if you have any questions. But thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Hope that wasn't too much of a whirlwind. I know there's a lot of information to take in, but I'm very happy to have individual chats with anyone as well if they are interested.
Perfect. Thank you. Really, really informative and a great way to kick off. And so we'll now continue with our past awards winners. So first up, we've got Dr Marcus Watson, Non-Exec Director at Ground Control and winners of the Innovation Award in 2016 and 2020. Thanks, Marcus.
Super. Thank you very much, Sharina, and thank you very much for inviting me to to talk about some such positive news. It takes me back to 2016 and 2020 might not have been such a good year, but nonetheless, it was in that part. So my name's Marcus Watson. I am a Non-Exec Director with Ground Control and I was the Managing Director, Ground Control for 10 years during the years where we we were blessed to win those those two awards for for innovation. I'm also a Main Board Director for Anglia Ruskin University. I'm very involved with the CBI and I've just launched a new company called Pest Partnership. And so I've got my my eye on a few of those awards in the in the future as I as I grow my business. So to give you a sense about Ground Control, which is where the the two awards for innovation were won, it's a people-based business. It's headquartered in in Billerica, but it's a UK-based business, UK-wide based business. We employ about 6,000 people. We've got a turnover of about 200 million. And our purpose is to care for the environment. How we go about it is we put people and technology at the centre of everything that that we do. And and what we do, we happen to create, maintain and sustain the the outside environment for for our customers. The yeah, I'd like to share with you some, a couple of aspects or a few thoughts, few insights on the application philosophy and process that that we followed and we found helpful. We 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 applied quite a few times and so persevering was was super helpful. And here's some top tips to to reduce that iterative process that we went through. Match your reward really carefully. So so if you think you're doing okay in a particular area, you're probably not going to win it. You need to be brilliant in that in that area and you need to answer the questions very precisely. So some some beautiful words and and answering questions in an adjacent fashion will 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 not work. And and that was part of the feedback that that we received. When we didn't get it and when we listened to that feedback very carefully, and I would encourage everybody who who does go through the process to to really listen to the feedback because it is excellent. It is. It is precise. It's not generic. And you can use that feedback to one, improve your business, but also improve your chances of of meeting the criteria later on. And another another insight that I would share is that your application needs to have a golden thread through it. So whilst you're answering some very specific questions, having that golden thread that is woven throughout the applications is incredibly helpful. And I found that if you're the MD, the CEO, senior director, senior manager in the business, it's helpful for there to be senior oversight in the storyboarding and that golden thread, maybe even writing some of the answers to the questions. Because you know your business better than anybody else in in the business. And so don't don't be shy in getting involved rather than, you know, if you're in a big business, perhaps delegating to to a to a team who might not know as much as as you. The the benefits for us have been have been great. I guess it first and foremost, it gives us the ability to benchmark what we our performance and what we think we are against a pretty high standard. So even not getting an award, there's a huge benefit in being able to to benchmark against that standard and have somebody independent say, yeah, really good, but have you considered these things? When you do get it, it really is a confirmation that you're doing all right and that your your business is 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 doing well. And it's superb as a tool for engaging employees and reminding them, and this is employees, new and existing employees, potential employees, to to underline the fact that we're a fantastic employer and worth pursuing a career with. And and with customers, they, you know, it gives them that that confidence that they have chosen their supplier and their partner wisely. Again, with new and existing clients, it's it's a real door opener. It's a conversation starter. And and it gives that immediate quality seal of approval without having to worry about understanding the various ISOs or whatever. It really does help in in that way. And and broadly, it it's a fantastic tool to to drive, to drive us and and help us improve and think about the next thing. So when I spoke moments ago about starting my new business, I really want to get a King's Award. And I'd love, I'd love to get another one. And I I know the kind of standards and the steps I need to achieve in order to do that. And if I do achieve those things in my new business, then that that means that I will I will have excelled and and achieved great things. So I hope that's helpful. And I'm, as Sharina mentioned, I'm very, very happy to speak with anybody who who perhaps would like to to learn more. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you, Marcus. And next up, we've got Rob Platts, who's CFO at Kestrel and winners of the Award for International Trade in 2010, 2018 and 2022. Thanks, Rob.
Good morning. Thank you, Sharina. Good morning, everyone. And so, yeah, I'm the CFO of Kestrel Worldwide Shipping Group of Companies. We've won the Queen's Award three times. We're a shipping agency and specialist international logistics company. We ship predominantly to the Caribbean, the Americas, Middle East, Asia, Africa. We genuinely are worldwide, although we're UK-based. We have all kinds of cargo that we ship, obviously containerised cargo projects, out-of-gauge, Roro, break bulk, sorry, I'm using shipping terms here, but basically we cover everything to all parts of the world. We do have focuses such as the Caribbean, that's where we're particularly well-known. But we also have a higher-end art shipping company. So we have 10 UK entities. We have 82 UK employees, we've got further 60 in overseas offices in Miami, California, New York, Caribbean Islands, South Africa and Hong Kong. So we're about 95 million in turnover. And yeah, we've won. Obviously, always looking for our next award and hopeful. So forgive me if I repeat some of the things Marcus has said, although Marcus has achieved his awards in innovation, ours is in export, basically. So, you know, our nuances will be slightly different. First and foremost, the numbers must stack up. Chloe went through how those numbers have to stack up, but that's the first thing that we do. It's my job as CFO to make sure, you know, we are presenting the correct numbers which are validated by our auditor. We have to demonstrate, first of all, the six years of international growth, continuous growth. Latterly, because we've won the award before, it's outstanding short-term growth. It's always difficult to sort of understand what is outstanding, what's not outstanding, because I suspect that's quite often sort of industry-specific, what what constitutes outstanding. So we just try and demonstrate as best we can within our context, what we consider outstanding and hope that that the Queen's Award Office, now the King's Award Office, also consider outstanding. So, yeah, the numbers must stack up. I'm going to say that on the CFO. Secondly, full disclosure, because we're, we are worldwide and we've got so many entities and we trade in so many different jurisdictions and geographies and we're a very complex business. It's very difficult to sort of keep it specific. And I think in in the past where we've had failures, it's by not keeping it specific to the question, but in international trade, you have to sort of demonstrate and explain everything that you're about. But I think Marcus used the phrase, the golden thread, you know, that that's important. Be be consistent in what you're presenting, but also, you know, full disclosure in what you're presenting. So for example, where you can provide websites, videos, links, anything to sort of allow the reader to to do their own research if they like, you know, to understand what your business is about. And get the personality of your company across. I mean, it's tempting to showcase your company because you're obviously proud of it, you're proud of your achievements, but it has to be in context and it has to answer the question. So I think that's for us in particular, being so wide-ranging and complex, you know, our founder, Andy Thorne, who would love to be on this call, talking to you right now. Unfortunately, he's travelling. You know, he likes to talk about the company and he's very proud of everything that that he's done, that we've done. And in early failures where where we sort of put in applications, I wasn't around in the early days, those failures basically emanated from perhaps showcasing too much but not sticking to the knitting. So sticking to the knitting, you sort of validate what you say, basically. If you say something, try and back it up. For example, if you say you're going to, your strategy is to grow, demonstrate how you grow, not just with, well, we go to new markets, we create profits. That's what everyone hopes to do, but we discuss, for example, new port calls in Guyana or Trinidad, we set up local offices, we create employment in local communities, we create customers in the local communities, we go beyond just identifying a market and then marketing to it.
Oh, that's unfortunate. I think we've lost.
Hello. Am I back?
We can hear you. We can't see you.
Well, that's interesting. That's probably better, actually. I'll keep talking because I know we're on a on a timetable. The other thing I said earlier, we illustrate the the personality of the Kestrel Group. So if I can use a specific example in in sort of some of the questionnaires, explain the overall importance of exporting to your company. As I say, we don't just say we find new markets, we make profit. We explain the passion that we as a company have, our founder in particular has for export. We talk about working with the communities, we talk about Andy Thorne, our founders, his relationships with UK overseas high commissioners, with trade groups. He's a mentor for the Commonwealth Enterprise and Investment Council, so we discuss that. Because we operate in many Caribbean islands, so it's relevant. There is the golden thread there, you know, it's not just showcasing, well, I'm this, I'm that. It's relevant to how we want to apply, how we create our exports and also how we use the award to further our business. So that's worth sort of picking out certain things that are specific to your company or industry. Another is, you know, discussing things like economic uncertainty. I mean, one of the recent sort of questions discusses economic uncertainty, how your business coped within COVID times. Each business had different challenges, you know, but as a business in logistics, we actually were almost showcased within the COVID years. And also the other area that we're rather big is in renewables, support for that industry. These are topical industries. So we try and tease that out in what we're presenting when we're applying because it's again, it's relevant, but it's also what hopefully sort of sets us apart from everyone else who's done great financially, but perhaps, you know, doesn't have these these topical sort of subjects. So in terms of the business benefits, I mean, it enormous. Most of our, most of our In our foyer, we've got pictures of Andy Thorne and our Marketing Director, Nicky Thorne, meeting the Queen. You know, people are impressed by that sort of thing, but it also gives your business gravitas, you know, you have to go through an audit process, you have to have made the grade. So you don't need to explain that. People see the emblem, they automatically know that you're credible, which is great. And more so when you're talking to people in Guyana or, you know, Commonwealth countries. So it's also a great reason for a party. You know, all the people who won it know what it's like, what it feels like to win. It's it's an enormous pat on the back for everyone in the company and we celebrate it, you know, we go down to to the House of Commons on the terrace. We've had a couple of parties there. They've been fantastic. I've personally been to the garden party at Buckingham Palace, which was amazing. I didn't meet the Queen, but I saw saw the Prince I didn't meet the Queen, but I saw Prince Charles as he was then, so I can say I've seen the King, I don't think I met him. But, you know, Andy and Nikki Thorne, his wife, who's both heavily involved in the applications. They have met the Queen. I know that was a key moment in their business. Basically, it's a big deal, you know, it is a really big deal. And I remember when I first started at Kestrel, I looked at all the marketing material and I saw that we'd previously won an award. And I thought, well, that's impressive, but yeah. Why, why the fuss, if I'm honest? But having been through the process twice, been successful twice, you know, we're still ongoing. I recognize now, you know, it's, it's an amazing achievement and it's, and you should really shout about it. Motivate yourself to get applying. You know, it opens up markets, it opens up opportunities and it motivates your staff. So yeah, happy, happy to have any questions. Like Marcus, we're happy to be contacted personally. Our founder, Andy Thorne, is also available anytime to talk to someone about this.
Thank you very much, Rob. Perfect. Thank you. So finally, we are going to hear from Daniel King, who is Project Manager at Foxway and winners of the International Trade Award in two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. So yeah, Project Manager at Foxway. So we actually won as our previous company, we're all the same people, we were bought by a wider European group who are called, also called Foxway, we're Foxway UK. And they're an IT, circular IT company. So our main focus in the, in the, in across Europe and across the world is to extend and reuse technology as much as we can. So try and keep that, that notebook on your desk in use as long as possible to avoid the carbon and materials that are involved in putting new equipment into, into the marketplace. And we, so we won the we won the, what was it, the international trades. So we won for, we'd only been established in two thousand and seventeen and we saw sixty-six percent year-on-year growth. For three years, which is obviously quite, quite a large, large amount of growth. And that's the thing, if you, as, as the others have said, like, I think the key factor is focusing on where your company really excels and stands out from the crowd. And I've been involved in previous awards in sustainable development and in innovation. And both of those, so the sustainable was because the volume that we were doing in, again, another recycling company, IT recycling company, sheer volume that we were recycling compared to our competitors and how much of an impact we'd made in the marketplace. And this time it was for, yeah, the amount of trade we'd done in three years, which was like the thread at the time of, of the company. And if you can find, you know, where your business really stands out and where you can be a beacon for others, so for the IT recycling. You know, raising awareness, our main aim has always been raising awareness for the reuse recycling of IT and materials. So if you can, if you can get an award and promote that to others, it's really worth doing. I think the, so the biggest thing that hasn't been really covered so far is go for it. Like, there's nothing stopping anyone from going for an award, so long as you meet the, the requirements. It's, it's definitely worth, if you've got a good base, it's definitely worth entering. Because you'll learn a lot through, through your application. And that's not just about, it won't just help you with your, your next, you know, you may not win the first time. But by going through the process, you'll learn about what's required for the next time, you'll get great feedback. You'll, you'll start learning through seeing who else has applied, who else has been nominated, what they're bringing, what, what has been the successes of other companies that, that you can look at and bring to your company. So that in future you can, you can improve not just your application and getting an award, but how you can improve your company overall. And I think it's, it's a huge deal in the UK especially. It's well-recognized internationally because obviously the royal involvement is amazing. You know, you've got the old Commonwealth company, countries that have, that are all, you know, really used to like, obviously, our dear Queen, and now the King has huge sway in, in international companies. But for the UK, there's so many companies that have, that have gone through this process, that have applied to the King, Queens and now King's Award. They know how rigorous it is, they know how few people and how difficult it is to win. So the fact that your company has won is a great sign that you're a great company to do, do business with and learn from. And then, yeah, the, I think the, the other great benefit is how inclusive it is for the whole company. So we had, when we won, we had a big ceremony for everyone. And then having the Lord Lieutenant come to the, the business and then present the award to all of the staff was a huge, huge day for us. We got everyone involved. Everyone into, into our big warehouse CC behind us and had tea and coffee and everything while, while it was presented and talks and everything. So everyone feels involved, everyone feels like they were a part of, of the success that had led to winning the business, winning the award. And yeah, it's had a massive legacy. Each of the different awards has had a massive legacy in, in helping us win. I mean, it's, it's been key in winning multimillion pound bids and tenders that we've done. And as I say, it's so well-recognized internationally that it gives you that badge of honor that you can then talk about and discuss that really make you stand out from so many other companies out there. But again, welcome to any questions or any, any communication or contact anyone would like, especially on the, on the innovation and sustainability ones, because that's our big focus now.
Thanks, Daniel. Brilliant. Thank you to all those who spoke. Really, really informative. So we now moving on to the Q and A section. So these are to any of our speakers today. So as mentioned before, you can either use the Q and A function to type your question is and who it's for at the top of the screen. Alternatively, you can virtually raise your hand using the button also at the top of the screen to ask your question. So open to, to anyone on the corner to ask questions while we wait for that to warm up. We had some questions sent in prior to the webinar, so I will ask those. So question for yourself, Chloe. Should I consider consultants when it comes to the writing of my application?
Thanks, Shereen. So with consultants, we, we don't advise one way or the other. We do think it depends on, on your business. So we, we believe that your business knows your story the best. So when, as some of the recipients today have so eloquently said, it really is about the passion for your business and keeping that narrative. And I think Marcus said that golden thread going throughout the whole application. So we believe that you as, as the business, as someone within that business knows it the best. However, we do appreciate that it can take, it can take a lot of time to do the application. So perhaps if you are, if you have, if you don't have the capacity to do the application form, that may be perhaps when a consultant maybe, maybe needed. But we do, or perhaps give five guidance, because that's something we also suggest is once you've written the application, we ask, we suggest you have sort of a critical friend, have a look at that, someone from outside of your company, just to check through if it makes sense, if it's free from technical jargon. Because although our assessors are experts within their, within their field, there are elements and particularly for the innovation category where there are lots of acronyms and very technical language. So it's just making sure that it makes sense to someone from the outside, whether that's a PR company or a critical friend in another sense. So yeah, we, we wouldn't advise one way or the other. We do, we think it does depend on, on your business. But what we would suggest is when they open on the sixth of May, you can register on the application system and download a copy of the application form. Perhaps have a look through the form yourself, see what's involved, see if you believe you can do it within your company. And as I said, you can add lots of collaborators as well, so it's not always just one person. You can add different collaborators working on it together.
Thanks, Chloe. That's helpful. Hopefully that answered the question for the person who asked. Moving on to another question. So Rob, one to yourself. You mentioned having applied after, you won three awards altogether at Kestrel. But you had mentioned that you'd applied previously and not been successful. So there's a question here around how you motivate yourself to apply after maybe failing before.
Well, we're not good at hearing the word no here at Kestrel, so you know, that in itself is a motivator. But I, I think it's, you know, understanding, well, we, we really, really wanted it and we had a lot to, to offer in the application. But it, it's staying focused, it's, it's keeping on the subject. And I think, you know, don't be afraid to seek advice. I mean, just, just being on this webinar, I've actually learned an awful lot from Marcus and Daniel about the way they approached it. And I found myself thinking, oh, yeah, I wish I'd spoken to people sooner, actually. So yeah, I think you motivate yourself because it's, it's such an important business award to win. And you motivate yourself by knowing that you've got what it takes. You just need to, to find out what you need to finesse with your application. And I think Andy Thorne spent probably a great deal of time on the phones, Keith, saying, well, we, we've got it, we're growing, we're exporting. It's what we're about, you know, why aren't we winning? And Keith sort of said, we'll answer the questions fundamentally and that just steers you. So yeah, that, that's the motivation. I mean, the motivation is the prize, but you need to feel confident that you can do it. And as Daniel said, you know, you have to have that just go for it mentality as well. Give it a try.
Yeah, that makes sense. That doesn't make sense. Thank you for that. Question for Marcus. So you won an award for innovation. How do you link the demonstration of innovation when it comes to your business?
Yeah, that's a good question. That, that's actually the tricky part of the innovation. Or I found the trickiest part of the innovation is you've got this great. And for us, it was our, our system and the way in which we allowed our, our business, which was growing like Bilio, how to, how to make it really simple to deliver an incredibly complex, large number of transactions happening in different locations to different specifications, et cetera. It was just mind-blowingly complicated, but the innovation made it simple. So what? That was the question that, you know, let me paraphrase what the Queen then as a word asked, it was, so what? And the so what is, you need to link that innovation directly to increase profitability. And so innovation, just for innovation's sake, what wasn't, would not have answered the question. So we, we had to, you know, carry on asking the question, so what, so what? So what does this do? How does this, how, what, how does this innovation significantly contribute to the improvement in profits over a significant improvement in profits over a three-year period? So, you know, the first one is, are your profits increasing significantly over a three-year period? Thankfully, the answer was yes. And, and by asking that question, you know, why, 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 so what? Until we were able to clearly demonstrate the link between our innovation, better productivity, huge effectiveness improvement by, you know, all of those kind of things allowed us to, to make that link in a, in a very clear and tangible way, which, which was accepted. But that, that was the trickiest part in, for me, in the innovation award.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, I've got a question for Daniel. So how, the question is, how do you find the right hook to win the right award for your business?
So I think it's, it's funny, sometimes it just comes to you, right? Because, and it can be difficult because there are, they're quite broad categories. So finding, and you might be doing, doing well in all of them. So how do you find the one that like, so clearly previously with, with sustainability, we, we applied for sustainability and for the innovation both times. Because what we were doing was novel in the marketplace, so it was innovation, but also it was sustainable. So we had to decide which one we were going to focus on and throw all our weight from that into, into one of them. But hearing Marcus just talk then, it's, so we've got a new section of the company that's been around probably in the last year and a half. And hearing Marcus say about the innovation and how that ties to, to profit now. Now that the revenue from this new section that we've got, which is a a Microsoft authorized refurbisher program that we're doing. Now that we've got real profit that we can, and revenue that we can show around it for the last couple of years. Actually, probably this year is the time to enter that, having heard Marcus so eloquently put it. Because now we can show that not only is there, again, we had that innovation last year, but we didn't have the, the revenue or the profit to go alongside it. Now we have, it means that now we could apply and probably have a good chance of, chance of winning. And I think to say about the, the award in general is I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of awards, there's too many awards in, in every industry, there's hundreds of awards, right? And if you buy a ten-person, ten, if you buy ten seats at a table to an award, you've got a good chance of winning. In fact, you've probably not got any chance of winning unless you buy ten seats at a table at the award ceremony, right? So a lot of companies have a lot of awards and they, it's hard to know what means anything. And then you've got the Queen's, King, now King's Award, and it really means something because there's no shortcut to it. There's no, there's no, you know, you can't, you can't just get a consultant in, write a few words on paper, buy a ticket and, and get the award. You really have to know what you're doing, you have to, you have to focus on, and this is where, you know, have, doing it internally, having the, having the focus and the, you know, the excitement about your own business. If you're excited about what you're doing as a business, as you can so, so clearly hear that Robin and Marcus are, then, you know, you've got a good chance of winning. If there's something that really makes you excited, if there's something that you think you're really bringing that is different or novel, then you've got a good chance and it's worth entering.
Great answer. Thank you, Daniel. Chloe?
Thank you. And yeah, that was a great answer. I just wanted to add something I thought of as, as you were speaking, Daniel, is that we don't have a cap on the number of applications or winners, so there's no quota, so to speak. We've had a bumper year of applications this year and we've actually got around a hundred more recipients this year than last year. So it just shows that if we have enough companies apply and they meet the criteria, then they will be successful. You're not judged against your competitors, so we could have two very similar companies apply. And so long as they both meet the criteria and they're both outstanding in their own merit, they can both win. So they're not competitive awards. We have no quota and we would love to have as many winners as possible.
That's amazing to hear. That's good, yeah.
And I'm sorry, just also as well, that I, I forgot to mention earlier is that we, we like to sort of it's not, there's a misconception, I think, that these are quite, these are awards for quite big companies, multimillion pound businesses. Ninety percent of our recipients are actually SMEs and we have a number of those in micro businesses as well. So please don't be put off if you think that these awards are too big or too little for you. They're open to businesses of all sizes, so long as you have two employees. And we just ask that you answer the questions in relation to the size of your company. So yeah, please don't be put off if, if you think you're perhaps too small. We have many small family-run businesses receive the awards every year. Yeah, and again, we do have lots of case studies. So if you think you're, they're not for you, they are.
Thanks, Chloe. I think that's a really, really important reminder, especially considering the landscape of businesses in Essex. It is, you know, the very large majority is SMEs, so that's a brilliant reminder. Thank you. We've got a question in from Aisha.
Hi, sorry, my chat function's not working, so I'm going to speak. First of all, thank you, Marcus and Daniel and Chloe for like all the insights you've spoken about. I saw a post not too long ago, it was like an animation workshop. Do you guys still have that or what goes on in that workshop? Is it one-to-one help to help us write our applications, anything like that?
Was that too, was that too specific person, Aisha, that question? Sorry?
Probably Chloe, because Probably Chloe, because so it's the King's Award and it was non-nominations workshop. And I think it wasn't specifically from the King's Award, but probably a Growth Hub?
Yes, it may have been a Growth Hub. So we, we do presentations such as this one today, rather than, rather than actual workshops. But I believe Growth Hubs and L F Tendencies, obviously like the event today will put on sessions as well. I'm not, I'm not aware of any that are happening in Essex, but that doesn't mean that they're not, they're not taking place. So yeah, perhaps, I mean, Serena, perhaps you may know, or it might, it might just be getting in touch with Growth Hub. Perhaps Growth Hub are doing some. And we're happy to discuss applications with, with businesses on the phone on our helpline. And what, what we cannot do is, is look at sort of example answers, but we are very happy to advise you through, through the questions and, and help you if you're perhaps stuck on any questions and, and then anything like that. But we don't, we don't sort of do workshops. They say we, it's more events like today. But it doesn't mean that they're not taking place.
Right. You could probably talk to the Growth Hub if they have any more of those going on.
Yeah, I can definitely take that one away, Aisha. Thank you. We had a question also in on the chat from Michael, just with regards to two members of staff. So is that two members of staff based on the company's house posted accounts? And that's probably for you, Chloe.
I can't get off mute. Yeah, so it's two, it's two full-time or equivalent employees based on your payroll. So they would, they would need to be on your payroll for that application period.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Thanks for the clarification. It's just that we were doing something on innovation in, in our account council recently. And a lot of businesses weren't eligible for the Innovate UK awards because their company house records don't show them as having two staff. If just a business model and accounts they use, I think, but they, of course, they had more than two staff, but then they're knocked out of it. So I didn't know if that's the sort of thing that knocks them out. But so thanks. Basically, if they can show the payroll record.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chloe. That's great. So can I just add to the people like Marcus, et cetera, said, because I used to work in central government for defence exports, but also for into exports. And points of people making about applying for the international trade ones. In, in my experience, you know, you need to think when you're going into those markets, shall we get the awards? Because they do make a difference. And it's not just for those countries that were part of the Commonwealth. You know, we had Anglin Water applying, you know, because they were working on a concession in China with loads of defence companies wanting to apply. And you've got to think about when you go through the door of those countries, am I going to start selling into here if you're talking about getting into tender, tender situations, et cetera? Having those awards does make a difference. Sorry.
No, that's great. Thank you, Michael. Echoing everything else that everyone has said. That's, that's great. We have had also from Keith.
If I could, I just wanted to go back to Aisha's question. Within Essex, we've got a panel and, and the three organisations represented here are part of that panel who have kindly offered to give any support that potential applicants might feel they're, they, they would need. And that panel covers all of the categories that are available to apply for. And if, if it would be helpful, once you've had a, a look at getting the application up and running and started, or you've got any very specific questions, I'm very happy to connect you with the correct member of that panel to see the which of the four categories that you are going for. So that's another way we can perhaps help, which is a slightly different answer to the question, I think, that was asked about the workshop.
Perfect. Thank you, Keith. Another example of the way that everyone's pulling together for the awards. It's, it's really good to see. There was another question. So for yourself, Rob, you mentioned employee morale earlier as part of your, 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 your part. So just wondered if you could tell us a little bit more about how this was affected after winning the King's Awards?
Well, you just need to look at our website to see how big a deal it is to Kestrel. You know, I think the, the last question highlighted that you need it as an exporter if you're going to be credible. So everyone's aware of how important it is. It's also, it's quite a long process. And, you know, we talk about it. We're, although we're a large company, we're not really, we're quite small in, in the team here in the UK. And so, you know, when we're putting together our application, it touches virtually everyone in the business. And so when you are successful, everyone feels a little, a, a small part of that success, you know. All business leaders will tell you that, you know, there's someone at the top, but there's an army of people beneath that are all singing the same song and making things happen. So you know, we're, we're very good at sharing that. And, and that's why we, we probably spend, you know, too much time and money organising the, this celebration parties. But we recognise how massively important it is to the, to the company and the company, you know, is, is the people basically. So we do go overboard. So, you know, I think that's a great motivator in itself, you know, recognising the staff. We also, it's a bit of a cliche, isn't it, to say that? But you've kind of got to walk the talk.
Most definitely. Got a question for all, all the speakers now. And really just building on the emphasis that's been made about the importance of the process to win the awards and how vigorous it is and the reason for that. And I think you've all touched on it in different ways, but just really interested in understanding the, the legacy that that helps with and the door opening that the awards have maybe created for, for you all. Marcus, how about yourself?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a mark of quality. It's a mark of a standard that everybody recognises. The, the, the brand of, of the King is, is worldwide. It is known. It has a standard. And, and to be associated in that way, actually, you're, you're basking in the glow of somebody else's, somebody else's standard and, and it, it's, it, it goes beyond any of the other quality seals that one might, one might apply for and get, whether they be ISO and IIP and whatever, whatever else. This, this really encapsulates all, all, all aspects of the business I, I, we found. So we, we don't say, oh, by the way, we've won a King's Award for enterprise, Queen's Award for enterprise and innovation. We've won a Queen's Award for enterprise. And, and therefore that, that is so, 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 so powerful as, as a, as a conversation starter, as an immediate recognition of quality and excellence and, and all of those things. And it's encapsulated in just a few words and one logo. It, it really is quite fantastic to be able to, 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 to share that. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, perfectly. Thank you, Marcus. Rob, was that a hand up?
Yeah, I mean, Marcus articulates that very well. But I suppose one other point I'd just like to add is it, it's enduring. You know, once you have it, you have it. It stays with you forever, presumably. It's not like, then next year, there's another extra of the year 2024. This is an award for your company and what you have done. And it's not about the other people in the industry necessarily. You could have 100 award winners within, you know, our specific part of the, of the logistics industry. But, you know, that doesn't matter. We have it. And we will always have three Queen's Awards and look to more in the future with the King's Awards.
Amazing. Thank you. Daniel, any, any final things to add?
There's not much to, much to add from that. So well put. I would say the, the award itself, we have, we've got a nice conference room in our facility and it sits proudly on the table. Everyone that comes in comments on this beautiful cut glass award. So yeah, it's not just a logo. It is a physical object that is awarded. And it is beautiful. And it does raise a question every time any guest comes in. So it's, it's, yeah, it's great.
Perfect.
It's really good.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining today and taking the time. It's been really good to have like-minded people on the call to to exchange thoughts and ideas about the awards. There's clearly a lot of opportunity to have help every step of the way. All of our speakers are available to reach out to. So we'll send an email to those who are registered today with the contact details of these guys. And a final reminder that the webinar has been recorded. A link will also be shared with you all. So thank you once again. Appreciate all your time. Thank you to our speakers and cheers Chloe for joining and have a great Thursday. Thank you.
Cheerio. Bye.
Thank you.